And I was also asked by the school superintendent to give the commencement speech for the eighth grade graduation class. And I was also the school board liaison from 1995 for several years and maybe a total of fifteen years throughout various different years. I was helpful and worked with the school to get them a gymnasium and even voted to give the school a half a million dollars from our surplus to help pay for the gymnasium. I say to that liar, prove me wrong or resign from council. Sadly, one sadly sadly one has no record of accomplishments and only likes to throw mud to cover inequities on what they don't accomplish. Then most likely it would be best for our city as a whole to design to have someone else to do a better job. Bringing our school into a low-class campaign is without doubt as low as it gets. I don't think our kids or parents deserve to have that. And I spoke my mind about such a thing. I have laid out a major portion of my agenda and I can guarantee it will move forward. I encourage you to work with me and for the betterment of Eston Manor if, as a member of council said to me several months ago, quote, "Our job is to not agree with anything that you say," unquote. Continue with that philosophy in the phrase of Mr. Robert Zimmerman will then make you the next casualty on this council. But the present now will later be past. I ask council to work together for the betterment of Eston Manor. I would love for this council to be one that offers suggestions and help when there may be times that I don't get it right exactly. I don't have all the answers. I don't think there's anybody in this room that does. And I think that we all need to join together to help one another. This is productive and this is what our residents want. Throwing barbs and backhanded insults is counterproductive and something our residents are tired of hearing. Please keep in mind that its funding and revenue shortfalls have taken place over the years that we must reinvent our way of staying solid. I will give some reminders of past experiences that have occurred as the best of my memory goes, starting back in 2004. We lost an annual source of revenue when Governor McGreevy came in and that loss was an annual of nearly $120,000 per year. That was previously received for seven consecutive years in the work of Senator Bill Bourne. Then the interest that we were making from our landfill count, another casualty, from our landfill count and our other investments, went from a high of $118,000 from interest that we were getting, which was somewhere as near around 5% or better. And then when the interest rates dropped down to .25%, we were then receiving around $1,800. That is a very, very significant hit. Nothing that anybody on council or within the city had any control of. It just happened and there's nothing that we can do to change what the Fed did or what they have done in the past. Then Governor Christie cuts our school rate, which is the big line share of our taxes, and also cuts to pilot funding by one-third and then even acquires the largest land transaction in state history, that being Lenape Farms Track, also known as the Atlantic County Game Reserve. Which is over 5,100 acres of prime real estate. And with that acquisition, there lies the fact that now the state owns more than 60% of the land mass, which should be changing the funding formula from $7.50 an acre to $15 an acre. Once upon a time, it actually factors $10 an acre and if up to 60% or more, oh, I see Mr. Campbell smiling, then it was $20 an acre. We all have the vested interests in saving tax money. And we all have a challenge to move forward to become more fiscally responsible and work together. But please don't do this for me because I'm the mayor. Do it because this is what the taxpayers want exactly and demand from us. There is no other way and there is no other choice. Before I close, I do have a particular person, my son, Joseph Venezia Jr. I gotta tell you, never could I be any more proud. I don't know of any father that could be as proud of their son as I am of him. How many kids do you know at age 21 still hangs out with their dad on weekends? I must have done something right. My son is a member of the armed forces. He is a member of the Air National Guard. He is on the security forces detail, which if you don't know what that is, he's an MP over at the base there. My son is a graduate of Eston Manor School and also Atlantic County Institute of Technology. He is also volunteer fireman in Maze Landing. He had a certification for firefighter one. He is currently working on his firefighter two. And my son is very much attuned to wanting to become a state trooper. And I believe that he will reach his goal someday because I've never seen a kid so determined. Lastly, what I would like to say is thank you once again. And God bless us all and stay safe, healthy, and productive. Let's keep Eston Manor the best rural community in Atlantic County. Thank you. One of the downsides of this reorganization is I have about a week to prepare for this. Certainly, the first couple of days were rather quite hectic. But nonetheless, normally what happens is when someone's going to be the mayor, they have about two months to prepare and get everything exactly just the way it's supposed to be. I think I've got it pretty much good. If I make a couple of mistakes, I apologize. I'm not a Harvard Road scholar, but I certainly will try to do the best I can. Here we go. We have the council vacancy that was originally on here and we're gonna probably do some interviews at a very much sooner time. The very first order of business, actually, the nomination solicitor. I am gonna hold that until the end and I actually have some odds I would prefer to speak to the solicitor in closed session, rather than airing out certain things that I think could actually be not very professional on anybody's part yet. So I'm gonna hold that position at this time. As well as also the favor of redaction attorney. We're gonna move on down to the auditor. Okay, so for the auditing firm, we will have Bowman and Company with the caveat that Karen McAllister will be the auditor. Resolution number 14, 2018 moving down to resolution 15. At this time, I'm going to make a nomination to have Bowman and Company as our auditing firm with the caveat that Karen McAllister will be the auditor. Can I have a motion, please? Motion? Second? Second? Roll call.
Mr. Barbeda?
Yes.
Ms. Gibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mayor Venezia?
Next is the Atlantic County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund. I'm going to make the nomination of Hardingburg Insurance. To continue to stay on. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? I will make the second. I will state that I spoke to Chris Powell today and had some concerns with what we discussed. I think he has called this office as well.
For this conference today?
Okay, so I think if anything that was somewhat not clear, has been cleared up. And I believe we should move forward with Hardingburg Insurance. Mayor, roll call?
What?
May I have the session?
The cost between the Hardingburg Insurance Group and the McMahon Insurance Group is what?
I think that they get 6%, which is $2,500. And I believe Linda said something to me to the effect that someone is trying to undercut it, which is basically gonna be savings of what? $144?
I don't know. Do we have the actual numbers?
They said for 5.66% is what they're gonna be charging. So I don't really see if that's...
If McMahon came in at a price of 5.66% for Hardingburg, that's 7%.
And from my understanding that during the meeting of the insurance companies, that the company thought he would attend at all meetings?
Well, once again, Chris Powell has indicated he gets a copy of the agenda each and every month. This was the only town that he had. He has now picked up several more towns and he can indicate that he will be attending all the meetings. So...
No reason I could bring this up if I know in the past that he had each and every town.
He can do that. Last year was... Last year, yes, that is correct. But he has indicated now he has picked up three of those nine towns in the area, so he will be attending all of them. It's not him. He actually done with us last year. He had problems attending the meeting, but he's still gonna pay him the amount of money he paid him. Without getting into all the details that I'm not exactly 100% well-versed with, I can tell you that I see that there will be a significant improvement. And I can also tell you they have been the first management firm since 2001. Steve, for consecutive years in a row, did point them. I don't see what the issue is. I would like to just see them continue on. I don't see any issue that's gonna arise and spend the...
What do the people who work with them think?
Well, I think if you recall last reorganization and the year before, I did ask that question and Turn Brown was our city clerk. She indicated that, you know, very prompt and very good working relationship. She stated that also when they had issues previously before when they came in. That was one of the things that we discussed repeatedly about how the firm was handling the city and there seemed to be no issue. Firm said that they were just night and day from the one before.
But it seems like, but the fund commissioner, who is Linda, what does she think about the...
She had a conversation with Mr. Powell today and, you know. Tell me what you heard. Tell me what you've discussed.
He told me basically the same thing that you did, but it's an 11th hour call. I hadn't had a chance to really sit down with him. I have no... I mean, he started talking about his attendance last year. I can tell you from 2012 forward, they've only attended three out of 11 meetings each year. You can look at the attendance records for...
Nobody has ever complained until they're just hearing this for the first time?
I've actually, in the past, have said something about it. At times, I remember was the only one to respond. So sometimes by default, they were appointed as being the only responder. I have felt at times they were not available that, as I see it, other risk management consultants, you know, there, meeting with their people, I felt mine was not missed.
I'm prepared to move forward with Hardingburg. At the very least, they should have one more year of chance to, you know, if there's an issue, then the following year they can be reported. What can I say? Okay, we're gonna end discussion. I'd like that roll call.
Mr. Barbeda?
No.
Ms. Gibbons? Mr. Hughes?
No.
Mayor Venezia?
Yes. I guess they stay on as a whole. Next, we have resolution 162018 authorizing award of contract for municipal engineer. At this time, I would like to make the nomination for Trailenger Engineering to be our city municipal engineering company. Is there a motion?
A second?
Roll call, please.
Mr. Barbeda?
Yes.
Ms. Gibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mayor Venezia?
Yes.
We have resolution number 172018 authorizing award of contracts for municipal prosecutor. After a lengthy conversation that I had today with Frank Lenz, because I honestly don't know Carl Tofician, but I certainly trust Frank Lenz's judgment and he gave high remarks. So at this time, I'm going to nominate Carl Tofician, won't pronounce his name correctly, as our municipal prosecutor for Eston Manor. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Joe, he's from Maze Landing, correct? He's a prosecutor in Maze Landing, is that right?
Mr. Lenz explained that to me today, yes. I didn't know that.
No, this is a question.
Frank told me today, do I actually, do I know? But I trust Frank as... Can't you go on yet?
He is the prosecutor in Hamilton Township as well as...
Okay, thank you. So, did we have roll call?
Mr. Barbeda?
Yes.
Ms. Gibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mayor Venezia?
Yes.
Somebody got my phone? Take off my phone. Authorizing resolution number 182018 authorizing award of contract for the public defender. At this time, it is with great honor that I will nominate Frank Lenz as the public defender for municipal court. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Mr. Barbeda?
Yes.
Ms. Gibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mayor Venezia?
Yes. I apologize. I still haven't mentioned that in the effect of a conflict, the public defender would be required, then would be Michael Payton, and he served that capacity. So I don't see if there's an issue, but had that incorporated, we all have that in the resolution. Next, there is authorizing the award of a contract for the city forester. I believe that I'm abstaining from this one here because I in fact actually do have a piece of property that is under a wood management plan. So if somebody would make the nomination, please, Larry, I would... Make the nomination for the...
I'll make the nomination for the award of contract to that professional services department. See me in sessions.
I'll make that motion.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Barbeda?
Yes.
Ms. Gibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
And I abstain. Next, we have resolution 20 dash 2018, the annual scheduled meetings.
Okay, so the consent agenda? Are you going to do it as a consent agenda or are you trying to perform it?
I wanna do them separately, if that's okay. All right, we have the scheduled meetings, 2018. Everybody okay with that? Or will we not host it?
Joe, we're only gonna have one meeting?
Roll call. I'll make the motion. Your second?
We're only gonna have one meeting a month?
Now, there will be, we're probably gonna have a couple of budget workshop meetings. I actually think that, you know, we gotta get through tonight. We'll figure out when we're gonna have a budget workshop. Larry, I'm gonna hold you and I'm gonna hold the card also. You should post a notice. I don't know what the dates are yet when we'll do our budget. I actually do need to sit down with Judd first to go over certain things and then we'll be prepared to have a budget workshop. Because if we need them, we'll advertise to have them. But right now, I don't really see the emergent need. We'll have the one meeting at this time.
Well, one of the things that helped with two meetings was the paying of bills. We have been, it's been easier making sure bills have been paid on time by having the two meetings.
Why don't we discuss this at our next meeting? The very first thing that we will be having is a budget workshop meeting.
Later this month?
Yes.
Okay.
Later this month. I'll talk with Larry about when we can pick a date and obviously we'll contact Linda to figure it out for us. So we have resolution 20 dash 2018, all in favor? All right. Any opposed? Next, we have the resolution 212018, a resolution designating signatories for the city bank accounts. Pre-standard procedure, it's the mayor that signs the checks in the absence of council president and also the chief financial officer and the city clerk. I'll make the necessary motion. Your second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? 222018 to appoint a fund commissioner and alternate to the Atlantic County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund, whereas the fund commissioner, that being Linda Kent and Teresa Seaman is the alternate. I'll make the motion. Second? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Safety and health committee appointments. Resolutions 23 dash 2018. We have, the names in front of us and the only change it will be is for Hardingburg rather than McMahon Agency.
I actually have a government box and it's actually currently... There was no need in there.
I guess I moved some online.
Yes.
Sorry. I'm gonna go for the...
So I don't know what you want to do with that because you don't have a written entry consultant for that. I'll say, you know, this is...
Well, actually, in fact, Hardingburg is a holdover, so they will be. Resolution 242018. Did we just do that?
No.
I apologize. I thought you were gonna do it. Make the necessary motion. Is there a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Resolution 242018 who also allows contract persons to access the employment practices liability. Not flying. Hey, Atlantic County Municipal Jeff. We have all the information in front of us. I'll make the necessary motion. Is there a second? Without reading through this entire resolution. Give me a second. I'm gonna get one on the necessary. Have you got it? Yeah? Got it? And make the necessary motion. Is there a second? For resolution 242018? Give me a second. He gave you a second, sorry. All in favor? Aye, any opposed? Next, we have the appointments of the municipal employees. We have the municipal court administrator, Tony Cummins. We have the deputy, Patricia Campbell. We have the housing officer, Dan Collins. We have the zoning officer, code enforcement official, Mr. William Argnato. And we have the break-to-now, Piocha, Brian Johnson. And we have the APA compliance, Linda Kent.
Real quick, I had to make a modification to that because the court administrator has complained to me she's actually attending physician already. And she gave me the documentation that she got set up so I removed that showing the town that it was being a pension position and not requiring.
I took it on point anyway, but...
Right, okay.
Good, I'm glad she's attending. I'll make the necessary motion. Is there a second?
Second?
Larry, your second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Next, we have the resolution 262018 authorizing professional membership. And that being that myself is the mayor for the Atlantic County Mayor's Association. We also have one membership to be purchased for the New Jersey Conference of Mayors, that being myself. We have three memberships to be purchased for the Atlantic County Township officials. I would say that that should be myself. That would be council president Hughes. And quite frankly, I would like to respectfully ask council that I'd like to hold the next one. One of these could go to the next one, but what I would say is I wanna see who our next member of city council is. Frankly, I think that whoever we have coming in should become fairly familiar with what's going on throughout the county and what government is doing.
You wanna just hold this and that's all that?
I'm gonna hold the...
Hold that and that?
No, no. The only thing that I'm gonna hold is just the membership for the township officials.
Joe, what do you think about eliminating township officials but keep the league of municipalities? Because what you're doing on one, you can do the same thing on the other. So we could cut, we could...
I hear you now. I'd like to... Then maybe I should just give it designated as the mayor and I can attend the meeting too and I could report back to council. I think that that would work. I kinda really don't think it's a great idea for Eston Manor to drop out. Larry, you and I can alternate. If I can't make it, I'll poll it and then you attend for me. Either one? You alright with that?
I think you ought to go through your comments that we had. And then you say you had one that you wanted to hold?
The one that I wanna hold is, well, I'll say he only wants, he doesn't wanna do the township officials, but I'm saying I think the city should be represented. Therefore, I will be the representative. And as far as the league of municipalities, once again, the mayor should do that. The president of city council. And I would like to have the next member of city council coming in to become familiar with how government operates. So I make the necessary motion. Is there a second?
Can I clarify this?
Yes, please.
Clarify this. You have the mayor association partnership. Township official officials meeting with the mayor, myself, and one other township person. Could be made with another time.
Yes. But if we're buying three memberships out, new one draws draws to see who wants to go and if we're buying three...
But with the league, you have to, with the league, you have to name the people. That's, yes.
The league, that's what I'm doing right now. It's gonna be myself, it's gonna be Larry, and it's gonna be our next member of city council.
Is the township officials in the league the same? You, Larry, and the third person? Is that what you're stating those two are identical right now?
So there was a motion and there was a...
Let me get this straight, now. So the township, it's yourself, myself, and new appointed council position? And for the league, it's the same number of people?
The same people?
Same three. Why are we saying...
Well, then, what we could, what we... You know what? Why don't you guys speak amongst yourselves and each person was... We'll have three memberships and Larry, I think it's imperative you...
You can eliminate one for me anywhere.
Excuse me?
You can eliminate one for me.
Okay. So then I would be Linda. And whoever our next member of council to do the alternation.
But didn't we in the past, if we had more than three members, that we would pay to go?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I paid my way.
Somebody else wants to attend that meeting, they just pay when they're done.
That's correct. Okay, so there is a motion and there's a second, correct? It's not, I make the motion. Make the necessary motion. Is there a second? You have a second?
Is the outside?
Roll call.
Mr. Barbeda?
Yes.
Ms. Gibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mayor Venezia?
Yes.
Next, we have Resolution 27, 2018, designating the public agency compliance officer, Haco, and that being...
City clerk.
That being, Linda Kent, the city clerk. I make the necessary motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Next, we have to award a contract for janitorial services, that being personal touch for a fee of $225 per month. And without getting into all the specifics, we do have a contract that is a public document that anybody needs to see. I make the necessary motion to appoint a personal touch. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, miss. Yes.
Ms. Givens?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mayor Venezia?
Yes.
Next, we have Resolution 29, 2018, and that is to award the contract for animal control And I see we're going with a different company this year, that being animal capture and control service.